All right, Diane, you're unmuted, right?
Yes, I am.
All right, is everybody... Can I just do a quick mic check here? Is... Looks like almost everybody is muted. I'm just trying to make sure that's not something I did.
Hey, Matt, how you doing?
Okay, excellent. Anybody else out there that I can see?
Hello, hello.
Rick, you're good? All right. Mic's good? All right, so it is... You're recording Diane, right?
Let me just verify. Yes, it's recording.
All right, so it is 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna get the meeting started as we are... We have a lot to do, as it turns out. So going to ask that would begin with the pledge of allegiance, which is always kind of weird on a video delay, but let's give this a shit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I hope everybody stood for that. All right, let me just get a roll. I wanna... Cause some people aren't on video. So from the Board of Selectmen, who do I have on right now? Nobody? Is Kate on? Is Charlie on? Is Larry on? I know Lisa's got a charity thing she does tonight, so she won't be here. But if it's just me, this might be a quick meeting. I say that with love, but get a bunch of phones that are muted. It looks like. I don't know if that's... For the general public, just so you know, this is about our third meeting on Zoom. So we're kind of all learning how to do this.
Can you hear me, Matt?
I can hear somebody.
This is Andy Buffano.
Hi, Andy.
Hello. Hey, Mike.
Hey, Andy.
So it looks like Kate's coming in. People are coming in. This is the most we've probably ever had in Zoom history, that's for sure. All right, so Kate, are you on? Kate, can you hear me? Kate, looks like you're on mute. It's like that Geico commercial.
This is the reality we live in now, Matt.
Exactly, unfortunately.
Matt, I don't see Charlie on here at all.
You don't recognize the phone numbers or anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to text him.
I just talked to him and gave him all the information.
Oh, okay. Is Larry working?
All right, Kate, you can hear me? Signal? Okay, you got a thumbs up. Are you on mute, Kate? Is that the deal?
Yes, I was.
Okay, perfect, good. All right, so we have two. We need a third. So we're gonna find a third.
We could just do anything we want. Just kidding.
Yeah.
It's a joke, everybody. Money for everyone.
For those who aren't familiar, okay, so Larry says he's on. But he's muted somehow. All right, so let's... Larry, are you on the phone? Is that the deal? Not that you can answer me. Maybe you can text me.
He just... Matt?
Yeah.
He just texted me. He said you need to unmute him.
Yeah.
It's an unmute all, Matt.
Ask him which number he is.
I haven't seen a number that says unmute all. I see a mute all.
He's the 804?
Get that one, okay.
Okay, there he is.
All right, you back? You with us, Larry?
Hold on.
That's a good sign.
Yeah.
All right, so here's what we're gonna do. Let me find Trish. I saw her name here. Trish, are you on? Trish?
Viewer, viewer.
Matt, you have me?
I have you, Larry. Looking for Trish. Says she's on.
Is Charlie this morning?
You got me?
All right, we got Charlie. So we got four of us.
Oh, sweet.
Let me give it another minute on. If somebody could text Trish, I see her in the participants list, but I haven't heard her respond.
Yeah, she's on the screen.
Yeah.
Matt, you need to adjust your camera.
Now, that's me leaning forward to do all the stuff I'm doing right now.
Okay.
All right, here's what I'm gonna do. We'll get Trish back when we can, but I'm gonna do my public service announcement here. Hold on. Okay, so as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202... Or I'm sorry, 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing software for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 646-876-9923. Meeting ID number is 9040457732. We're using the link provided in the agenda. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email bossecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Okay, let me just check the... See if there's a waiting room. All right, it looks like there's nobody in the waiting room. So one more time, Trish, can you hear? Okay, maybe we'll get...
She says she's muted, Matt. You gotta unmute her.
Yeah, everybody's muted.
Yeah, I don't see...
You'll be able to right-click and unmute yourself, I think.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So Trish, you are not muted on my end. There should be a... If people are on Zoom, there should be a mute button at the top. If you're on a phone, I think it's the... I've never done Zoom by phone, but I think it's a mute button. While we get that worked out, I'm gonna start the meeting. I'd like to just give some sort of background. We, as Board of Selectmen, we're meeting in Zoom, as I talked about. The Governor has allowed us to do these by electronic means. We've been doing this for a while now. Because of delays and everything like that, what we're gonna ask people to do is if they want to speak during the public portion of the meeting, we're gonna ask them to make themselves known to the chair. Once the chair recognizes you, then we'll allow you to speak. Realize a lot of people want to speak, so we might have to have people move along in what they're talking about, just so we're not here all night. But background, these meetings started, I believe, the first emergency COVID-19 meeting we had was on March 16th, day after my birthday. That's how I remember that. We have been meeting at times, four nights a week, on COVID-19-related issues. Past month, we've let up on some of them. Our goal at the beginning of this, in that meeting on March 16th, to be just totally honest with you, is we canceled and closed just about everything we could. It was reactionary to what was going on in the world. We've been taking our lead, most of the time, I would say 99% of the time, from the Governor. So if the Governor puts guidelines out there, puts some sort of restriction or whatever, we'll usually go in that direction. We do have the power to do our own thing most of the time, but we use the Governor as kind of guidance to move forward. So one of the things we had talked about was that the park in the beach. And we had a situation where the Governor had announced that he was gonna make a decision on the beaches no later than June 1st. He actually had announced he had a goal of opening the beaches June 1st, but he wasn't sure. So we're using June 1st as a date for a next decision. Now miraculously, in government, he was early. So he came out with his decisions a lot earlier than that. I think it was last Wednesday, if I'm remembering correctly. So we've had a lot of people get in touch with us, so we've decided to move it up to our next meeting, which was this meeting. We're gonna discuss it. Now, what I can tell you is that any votes that this board has made, I think I can safely speak for the board. We've done so with the safety of the community in mind. We're not trying to complicate anybody's life or take anything away. We're trying to do what's prudent, what we think is safe for the community. So what I'd like to do, to kind of cut to the chase here, is I'm gonna ask the board to... And this is a non-binding vote. I'm just polling the board. Remember, we only have four members tonight. I'm polling the board to see if they are in favor, with no details yet, in favor of reopening the beach in the park. So Kate, are you in favor of discussing it tonight? Okay, you're on mute, Kate. You're on mute? Okay, so you're a yes?
I'm a yes. We just want to do it safely. Always have wanted to reopen safely.
Okay, Larry?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, Charlie?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so great. So that is a good start, because there's four of us who want to change the current situation. So what I have done, for those who haven't been to these meetings before, what we typically do is somebody on the Board of Selectmen will make a motion. That motion then hopefully will be seconded. Once it's seconded, we'll have discussion. So then we'll have discussion. We'll let the discussion go for as long as we think is prudent. And then I'll, as the chair, I'll call for a vote. So as I said, I'd like to cut to the chase, and you'll have to excuse me as I read this. And I've given this to Diane in advance, right? Diane, you have my proposal?
Yes.
Cause it's a long one. So I'm going to read this as a motion. I am just starting with the town beach, so I have another proposed motion for the park. But let's start with the beach. So I would move that the Newton Town Beach will reopen to residents effective immediately. Until further notice, the Selectmen are implementing the following restrictions in order to mitigate risk during the COVID-19 pandemic. Groups are restricted to 10 or fewer, and beach towel groups must be separated by 12 feet. Barbecues are prohibited until further notice. Ball games are prohibited. This is the beach, remember. Ball games are prohibited. For example, throwing around baseballs, kicking soccer balls, throwing frisbees, or playing any beach volleyball at this time. Cloth masks should, okay, I said the word should. Cloth masks should be worn when social distancing is not possible but are not required to be worn while swimming. Please don't ask me to explain that. It's gotta be in there. I'm sorry. For the time being, the town raft will not be put into the water. The beach parking lot continues to be for Newton residents only. Now, lifeguards will be on duty beginning on June 8th. Lifeguards will be on duty Wednesday through Sunday. Newton PD and lifeguards will strictly enforce all restrictions. Punishment could result in individuals being permanently prohibited from the town beach. All other recreation town beach ordinances not altered in this order will remain in effect. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right, I got three seconds, which is always a good thing. But I think I heard Charlie first. So I'm going to start with discussion, and I'd like to hear from board members on what I just read as a proposed motion.
To me, that's perfect. To me, that's perfect.
Thank you, Chair.
Just one question. If somebody's violating something down there, the police are gonna just remove them. They're not gonna give them a ticket or anything else like that. They're just gonna remove them for the day?
I would have to ask Chief Jewitt, what his normal practice for his officers are. And I don't know if the chief's on. He can quickly jump in on that. Think I heard him come off mute. No?
Mike?
All right, well typically, it's my understanding they're removed. And you know, the board can do something more permanent if we decide. But you know, this is a good opportunity to let the public know we're working in a fluid situation right here, okay? So tonight... Tonight, this is the situation we have, and we're trying to address. If you... If the situation changes, we'll change. But tonight, this is kind of what we're going with. Apparently, the chief is trying to get in here. Let me...
The fluidity of the situation that, you know, this is for everyone's safety. We want to make sure that people who are using the beach feel comfortable, so definitely keep us apprised of how it's going. We know we're gonna get... Everyone's gonna check. And if you have any good suggestions and you notice something's not working, let us know.
Larry, what's are your thoughts?
No, that plan's a good plan. No cookouts, no soccer games and all that. I don't think there's gonna be an issue with the distance socializing, because that beach is never really crowded, crowded. And you know, we're gonna put this on the website. We can put it out, so people gotta know. I would tend to agree, depending on the circumstances, maybe that resident would get a warning, depending on what they did, instead of getting permanently banned. But that would be up to Jewitt on the violation that they did. But I don't see any issues in any of that.
Did I just let the chief in? Chief, can you hear us? I guess not. All right, I'll get around to the chief here. Let me... At this point, we have, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, all board members are in favor of my motion.
I might add, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
I mean, the regular ocean beaches, you're not even allowed to sunbathe. So this is good for us that we can actually sit on a towel.
Yeah, this would be... That's a good point. You know, what I've heard from the Governor is active recreation only. So people aren't even allowed to stick around. So this would be one of those times, as I described, where we're... Excuse me, as I'm unmuting a few people here. One of those times where we're in a position where we're using the Governor's guidance, but we're doing our own thing. So what I'm gonna do is, and I think I've almost got the muting issue taken care of here. I'm gonna ask the public if they have any input at this point. Looks like I see... Sorry about the people on the phone, but I can see Rick Fox here with his hand up. So I'm gonna recognize Rick. What do you have for us, Rick?
Well, just as a member of the Rec Commission, I'm just concerned that people don't hassle our lifeguards, the young women that are gonna be our lifeguards this year, or their supervisor, who is one of our firemen, that if they ask them politely to social distance, that they don't hassle them. That's my only concern. And follow...
If last year's any indication, and it was a different situation, of course, but last year, they... It seemed like people, you know, didn't hassle them. As far as I'm concerned, and I think the board will back me up on this, the lifeguards are only gonna tell you once. And then they're gonna call the police, because the lifeguards are there for lifesaving duty. This is part of their duties, but we shouldn't... As Rick said, we shouldn't ask these people who are working for, you know, not all that much pay, putting themselves out there to have to be a disciplinarian the whole time. So thank you for that, Rick. I think I got a hand up here. Let me see if I can recognize the hand. And Chief Jewitt, I think you're off mute, are you?
Try it again. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Perfect, thank you.
So I think, Chief, what you were telling me via text is your people are instructed to start with warnings, right?
Correct, yeah. We would start with a warning, depending if there was something that was that obvious, that, you know, we had to remove someone, that, you know, we could take that action. But, you know, we would start with a warning and go from there, depending on what it was. If the lifeguards, you know, they call us and tell us that there's an issue, we'll go right down and see if we can assist. So it's not gonna be the lifeguards enforcing stuff. That would come down to us.
Yep, so that's why I say we're gonna tell our lifeguards to basically tell people once. And then they have a direct means of communicating with the PD. So I also wanted to explain, part of my motion, you'll see, the lifeguards have been on standby, because we haven't been able to confirm for them whether we'd have a job for them this summer, as you might imagine. So we're gonna be able to... Someone needs to go on mute if they're not talking, but... So the lifeguards are on standby. We are limited in our budget. The warrant article is only so much. The warrant article was going to cover, as it did last year, it was gonna cover the busy days, so Thursday through Sunday. As part of this motion, we can talk about it later, but I'm hoping the Board of Selectmen will support allowing us to use some unused funds in the recreation budget to support an additional day of lifeguards. Reason being, more lifeguards, more lifeguard coverage there will only help us in mitigation. And I don't think we're gonna be doing Old Home Day this year. It's just my guess. So we're gonna have some money left. But what is the board... Without that being a motion, is the board supportive of that?
Matt, this is Charlie. I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to miss Old Home Day.
Yeah, I know, I know. We'll see. It's a fluid situation, as I like to... I gotta get a T-shirt that says it's a fluid situation. Okay, Larry and Kate, are you generally in concept, okay with that?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make... We need to make people, just to remind that this was a huge pandemic. We want to keep our curve flat. We want to be safe, because we want to be able to stay open. We have more cases now than we did when we started our lockdown. So unfortunately, it's fluid. It's not business as usual. This isn't just to... We have to keep that in mind. That's all. Sometimes it seems like people aren't aware of that, so I'm just mentioning it. I'm done.
Matt.
So...
Trish is trying to get on.
Okay, she should be on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. Yeah.
Can.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure you could hear me.
Awesome, thanks. We'll get back to you.
That's okay.
Other members of the public, any thoughts, comments? If you don't have the ability to wave, just speak up. We got a wave from Nicole's iPhone. Nicole?
I'm wondering if it's okay to, to the left of the beach, are you able to put a kayak in there?
So according to the recreation ordinances, which were last updated in 2015, no. So an ordinance change is typically a public hearing.
Okay.
But I don't, you know, that was... Actually, 2015 wasn't before my time, but the original ordinances in 2006 were before my time. I'm assuming, and again, don't quote me. I'm assuming it's because people were leaving, things docked at the beach and things like that. So but what's the board think? It's, I'm one vote? Matt?
Wait, about the ordinance?
Yeah, Larry, Larry?
So I would have to visit that ordinance, but I've heard in the past that they've done it, and they've done it safely without any problems. I wouldn't mind allowing it, and if it became a problem, then we go back with the ordinance. And then we visit the next meeting with the rec, or if it needs to be a warrant, I'm not sure. I think it's just a selectment ordinance. So I don't have an issue with one or two launching here and there, providing that, you know, they don't leave their car on the street, cause there's no parking there. And if it becomes an issue, then we'll just ban it again.
And shouldn't they notify the, what you call it, the lifeguards that they're doing it to at the same time? What do you think?
Yeah, we can let the lifeguards know that we gave permission to unload a kayak onto the beach. It's not like they're gonna stay there. They're just gonna put it in the water and take off, you know, for a couple of hours, two or three hours, and then come back.
Right. I have no problem with that.
All right, Kate, what do you think?
I got to see the dock, but it seems like a great way to social distance and have a nice day on the lake. So I'd like to encourage that.
So there is, again, it's not my ordinance, but there is a boat ramp. There is a town boat ramp that was never closed.
Oh, where is it? I haven't seen it.
It's on the other side of the lake.
Oh, all the way to the...
Wildness row.
Yeah.
Oh.
So...
What do you guys think in the audience? I see your faces. You're like, yes?
Matt?
Let's see some hands up.
Hold on, Kate, hold on. Larry, go ahead.
So Matt, from what I heard before, that if they use the other boat ramp down by the pond, they leave their cars in the street, and it becomes a restriction for emergency vehicles trying to get down there. That's why I prefer they park at the town beach and then launch there, if possible. I don't think we're talking about a lot of kayaks. Maybe one or two, from what I've heard. But we could evaluate it. If it's becoming a problem, again, we could revisit it.
So here's what I'll propose is, now, this will be temporary, because in order to change an ordinance, we have to have a public hearing. Correct, Nancy? Am I...
I believe so, yes.
Cause we've changed stuff on that same set of ordinances, and we had a public hearing. Public hearing might last 10 minutes, but we have to have a scheduled public hearing. So I would take that as an amendment to my motion to temporarily allow the launching of kayaks. at the town beach. Diane, can you just plug that into everything else? You're on mute, Diane. Still on. Yeah, now we can hear you.
I believe you're gonna need a new motion just for that particular thing. Otherwise, your other big motion, if you change something, you're gonna have to redo the whole thing, I believe. So we'd cleaner to just do a separate motion for this.
Yeah, let's do that. So table that, we'll come back to it. Members of the public, any other thoughts you wanna share? Again, if you don't have the ability to wave your hand, just speak up on the phone. Not, let me get back to the single screen. Okay, so give it another minute here. If people wanna speak up about, again, this is just the beach, go right ahead right now. Otherwise, I'm gonna call for a vote. Okay? So here I go. So we're gonna vote via roll call vote. So let me start with Kate. How do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. That that was unanimous with the four of us here tonight. And by the way, for the record, Lisa Gonyer told me she would have voted for this as well, so it's, it was safe either way. So what I'd like to do is let's make sure the minutes, once they're done, we'll get this as a posting on the website and we'll get a copy to the police so that they know exactly what they're gonna do. So before we switch to the park, I wanted to make that quick motion. And I would move to temporarily allow kayaks to be launched at the town beach. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. So let's say Charlie seconded that. Discussion. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that one's unanimous. So we'll keep that open. We'll see how it goes, as we've been doing in a lot of these circumstances. We'll come back. If you're the public and you see it working out well or not well, we need to hear from you, basically what it comes down to. So Kate.
When is the beach opening effective? Tomorrow, June 1? I missed it.
So my motion said effective immediately. I originally said June 1, but, you know, we have a heat wave.
Okay, that's what I just, someone asked me, texted me, but I wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yeah, so I think nobody will argue if we open it effective.
But we need to have some signage with the new rules if it's, there's no lifeguard that's open.
So my only concern with that is, and I'm hoping we don't have to go into this level of detail in this meeting. My only concern with that is, do we wanna invest in signs for something that might only last a couple of weeks? So.
Can't you get just a whiteboard? Just so people
Something like that. So what I'd like to suggest, if the Board of Selectmen is okay with it, the Recreation Commission has a meeting on Monday. They can kind of tackle this for us. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
And in the meantime, we'll have the memo that's going out. So hopefully that'll penetrate, but.
And Matt, just look it around town real quick.
Yes, exactly. So we might have, since we did it effective immediately, we might have everybody hang up on us now and go to the beach. So. I think that's where my family's headed right now. So what I'd like to do is switch gears now for the park. Okay? So this is my motion. So I would move, Greeny Park will be reopened effective immediately until further notice. The Selectmen are implementing the following restrictions in order to mitigate risk during the COVID-19 pandemic. Groups are restricted to 10 or fewer. The playground equipment will be closed until further notice. Just so everybody knows about that one, disinfection is not an option, and the playground equipment is horrible to be in with. It's dangerous anyway. Tennis courts, ball fields, basketball courts will all be open. Small group workouts or pickup games of 10 people or less are allowed. Cloth masks should, again, I use the word should. Cloth masks should be worn when social distancing is not possible. The greeny parking lot will be for the use of Newton residents only. Newton PD will strictly enforce all restrictions. Security cameras, which are installed at the beach, will also be used to, or I'm sorry, installed at the park, will also be used to monitor adherence to guidelines. Punishment, or I'm sorry, adherence to restrictions, they're not guidelines. Punishment could result in individuals being permanently prohibited from the park. All other recreation ordinances related to Greeny Park not altered with this order will remain in effect. I'd like somebody from the board to give me a second.
Second.
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Charlie for discussion. It sounds like Larry, you have something for discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to see if if the ball teams go down there for their practice. If they can, I know they pass it around the bats. If they could just wipe down the bat with the Lysol clean after each kid uses it. And, you know, it will help in from spreading anything, if there is anything there. I don't know if anybody's on for the Newton Baseball Commission.
Mike Booton, what do you, who do you have for us?
So we we had a, so the the president of the Quintown Baseball, Quintown Baseball, which is the nine towns that that play in, and Newton is part of that. So we're part of Sanborn, which is formerly the Newton Baseball Softball Association. We we joined Kingston years ago and we're playing collectively with them. We were having a meeting actually right after this, so we wanted to see what was gonna happen here. But the Quintown, the nine, the nine-town Quintown Board had a meeting last night. And we are, we are planning to follow the the Governor's stage two, which is pretty much, it sounds like what you just laid out. And then also, we have the the Babe Ruth, the suggested guidelines from the Babe Ruth League, which is a league that we play for, as well as a waiver that we're actually, we like the waiver, but we're actually having it reviewed by legal counsel to make sure that it it actually holds water because obviously people are are concerned about liability. But with that being said, yes, we're completely in agreeance with wiping down. We're actually thinking about, well, not thinking about, we're gonna, we're gonna try to create a new position for someone to help us disinfect and clean the 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 equipment. Most, most kids in the, so we 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 voted last night for the Quintown League that T-ball and rookie ball, which are the two entry level, entry levels of baseball, we're just gonna forego that this season. So it's only gonna be minors and majors, and it'll be a small number of teams. Most of these kids at this age level have all their own equipment. Now, with that being said, there there will be some shared, a couple of shared bats for the kids that don't have them. It's very rare that kids don't have them, but we will be absolutely sure that that after each use, it's wiped down. We have the guidelines for the practices, the groups of 10, where we can have 10, 10 kids on one side of the field with a coach and 10 kids on the other side of the field with a coach. So, you know, until we're cleared to play games, that's how we would plan to move forward. I mean, we understand the guidelines of of, you know, we can only have two people in the dugout. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty significant and it's gonna be a big change for us in how we're gonna have a season. And just so you all know, the season, if we, if we're able to have one, will be important to six to eight games because we need time to prepare, time to practice, time to roster teams and and get the insurance all set up. But collectively, as a group, from from the mate, from the Quintown level, the nine towns, surrounding towns, we are, we are as prepared as we can be. And we're hoping that, you know, this week will will allow us to get on the fields and 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 get these, these boys and girls playing baseball and softball. So that's my two cents.
Awesome. Thank you. And hopefully they won't hold out for their full salaries like the major baseball player. So, but that's awesome. I I'm glad to hear that you guys are gonna try to get a season out of this.
It'll be shortened by the season, yes.
Right, right. And as as Mike said, the governor has yet to allow the games. He's just opened it up for the practices and getting loot. And so, so that was sort of what I put in that motion. So we'd be in line with that. So what I would assume we'd have to do is, once the governor, again, we're watching the governor closely. Once the governor opens it up some more, the Board of Selectmen will get back together so you guys know you're able to play.
Sure. What what the hope tonight is that 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 the Board of Selectmen will will allow us to use the fields for the the practice and the groups of 10 with the coaches.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a problem there. But anybody else from the community wanna speak on this? All right. So that's good news. So I got a second by Charlie. I'm gonna call for a vote. So I'd like to start with Kate. How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, great. Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that's unanimous. So thank you, Mike. You guys are good to go for your practices. And the public can go. You can play basketball. You can play tennis.
Right.
You can go for a walk, stay off the playgrounds. We're gonna have those properly marked. I think we already do. But the playground
Have a good season.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it.
No problem. As I said, the, nobody wants to be on the playground equipment anyway. So that is not something we're gonna wanna disinfect every day or anything like that. So I'm gonna leave the topic of Greeny Park then. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So if there's people on the call who wanna stay on the call, you're more than happy to. But you can drop off now and it won't hurt our feelings. I would drop off if one of you guys wants to take me with you. I would drop off. So.
I have another, I have a baseball meeting right after this. So again, thank you, guys. I'm gonna call it a night and have fun with the rest of your meeting.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, take care.
We'll see ya.
Yep.
So I'm gonna switch gears really quick because it's COVID-19 related and I see her there and Julie Lemire, Supervisor of the Checklist. This is a hot topic on the front page of the Eagle Tribune today, actually. If anybody read the Eagle Tribune. So at a certain, for people that don't know the background, certain date prior to elections, you have to be given, given the opportunity to change your party affiliation. So Town Hall is closed. We've, we've opened it up really to just a couple of employees and we don't really want the public going through there. So many towns are coming up with innovative ways with guidelines from the governor of making sure everybody still gets to to do this, whether it's by mail, which Julie, I think, is an option. But you guys, I think, are targeting June 2 for that half hour meeting usually, you guys usually have. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the state requires supervisors to meet on June 2. It it was a date that was picked, you know, a long time ago when they printed off the 2020 calendar. So we are required to meet June 2 from 7 to 7:30. Typically, we meet in Town Hall. And my thought, well, Secretary of State put out that we can hold a socially distant Zoom meeting. So the meeting always has to, has to have two supervisors in attendance. So my plan would be to have a Zoom meeting with the other supervisors. And then just for convenience sake for the public, I could actually, I was gonna, I'm asking for permission to just meet outside Town Hall that evening. So anybody who wants to come by to drop off either a registration form or a change of party form or whatever else they might need to do to update, update their voter status, I could meet them at their car and, you know, take a look at their driver's license or take their information or whatever it happens to be.
So. So. So I think that sounds like a good idea to me, you know, just by way of of info for the rest of the board, the Salem, New Hampshire, I read today, they're doing the same thing. Obviously, a much bigger population and they're kind of doing a drive-by approach to it on a, on a certain time. So what does the Board of Selectmen think about this?
Great idea.
Okay. Anybody have
I have no problem.
Okay.
Matt, I have no problem, but what if it rains?
Yeah, what are you thinking?
I own an umbrella.
Awesome.
Okay, sounds good.
Imagine that. I'm a hard New Englander. I can handle it.
Right. The good news is ours is normally just a half hour anyway, right? So.
It is. And honestly, I I think the, in the six, four, four years that I've been doing this, I think the busiest time I might have had five or six people in line and and usually nobody shows up. So.
Yep.
So that's that.
All right. So I don't, I don't think we, let's make, somebody make a motion just so we have it in the minutes, but anybody wanna do it? Larry, I'm sure you'd love to.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to allow the Supervisor of Checklist to operate for a half hour according to state guidelines in the parking lot of Town Hall Road to accept any party changes from the residents.
Second.
Okay, Charlie's the second. Let's do a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that's unanimous. So good luck. Hopefully, it's a sunny day. If you guys don't have masks, Trish or Larry are your contacts for that. Sure, they can help you out.
Excellent. Well, I happen to be making masks on Etsy, so no problem there. But there, there is a second thing I I would like permission for potentially.
Yep.
If I can. So I'm wondering if I can have permission on some other date to enter Town Hall. I need access to the Supervisor of the Checklist closet and specifically the voter registration books, the A through Z books. I have been holding voter registrations since March in my house, which I'm not comfortable with. Yeah. So there's a lot of paperwork in my house that doesn't belong to me.
So I think what we typically like to do is make sure people don't cross paths. So I'm wondering, maybe Diane and Nancy can answer this question for us. What would be a good day? I think Diane
Friday?
Yeah, I'm thinking Friday would be good.
This Friday or any Friday?
Any Friday. Nobody's usually there.
Okay. All right. Awesome. And so originally I was gonna say, can I at least have five minutes to put the stuff in there? But would it be okay to stay maybe up to a half an hour to actually put the stuff in the books alphabetically properly?
Yes, go, if you go over a half hour, the door locks. And you'll be stuck there all weekend, just, you know. But I, I think you'll be in good shape for as long as you need. I think the board will agree with that. Just, you know, kind of clean. You're a mom, you know, clean your way out, you know.
I will.
Disinfect on the way out. So the board okay with that?
Aye.
I am.
Yeah. No, no issues. Half hour, an hour, two hours, don't matter.
Awesome. I really appreciate it.
Map table is available.
Which table? I'm sorry.
The map, the map table where the computer is.
Yes, okay.
So you can use that.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you very much. I will bring my disinfectant wipes and I will wipe stuff down. No problem. I appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you for, you know, you guys for doing all of this in the middle of a pandemic. So.
Yeah, no big deal.
And we'll see what September up like. So.
I know, right?
Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
Take care. Bye y'all. You too.
All right. So our normal first agenda item that provides our largest ratings, this is what everybody tunes. Alright, so, our normal first agenda item that provides our largest ratings, is what everybody tunes in for, are Trish's updates. But Trish got, uh, missed there, so we'll give Trish the floor right now. Trish, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I can hear you.
Good. Gee, guess what? I thought I was gonna have a lot of people actually listen to this. Oh, well, live and learn, right? So, I, I, I'm gonna really fine-tune this. I know you said 10 minutes. I'm gonna do my best. Um, there, thanks, I know. I, I, we need to all eat supper and go relax.
Right.
Okay. So, the current numbers, I'm gonna start with that. So, we haven't talked since Wednesday night. So, what I'm gonna talk about is Thursday through today. But I really have fine-tuned a lot of it. So let me start with our numbers. Um, in the late talk on numbers, I have to say, you know, there's a lot of people putting numbers out there, and then not necessarily accurate. So, let me bring you up to date. As of today, we have 4,231 COVID cases in New Hampshire. That's up by 363 since last Thursday. We have 2,550 recovered. That's up 1162 since last Thursday. We've got, unfortunately, 214 deaths. That's up 24. Now, specifically for Newton, because people are always asking, and again, just so that there's some clarity here, we only have three current cases in Newton, and two of the three are in the same household, and they'll actually come off the list this week. Remember, this list is a moving target. Every 21 days, every day, something's coming off, because it recycles as the people get off quarantine and get better. There's also, um, total since all this started, we've had 21 cases in Newton. But there's not 21 cases. There's only three current cases right now. The balance of those other 21 have recovered, and they're off the list. I know there was talk back and forth about a death having been reported in Newton. Just so that you're clear, according to our E-911 list, which then get propagated by hospitals, we have zero deaths in Newton. Now, if somebody did die in Newton, say they started out here, and maybe Trinity transported them, and they ended up in Boston. Boston is supposed to then let us know.
So somebody is on, is not on mute. Looks like they might be on mute. Go ahead, Trish.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm just trying to clear that up, so there's not confusion. Okay. So, the 21 you're seeing are not active. Whoever's doing that talking, it's not active anymore. There's only three active. Okay, now, I'm gonna take it, dial it back a notch. Um, so as of Thursday last week, we had 24 first responders. And again, these numbers are daily. That's why you always hear them, and they're a little different. Unfortunately, it's very sad. But, so we had 24 first responders that tested positive. 36 first responders are being tracked in quarantine, and out of those, 16 are fire, 20 are police. 36 are members in alternative housing, um, and also two EMS.
So, so whoever just dropped the F-bomb there, we can hear you because you're not on mute. We'd like you to go on mute.
They're, they're, they're all responders? So what are they doing? They getting together too much, or not working?
Alright, I found, I think I can, uh, mute them.
Yeah, mute that per, you know what number it is?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Trish. Keep going.
Okay.
Well, it might be if they work, though. That's just part time.
Hold on, I gotta get to that number.
So, with the person at 603-382-20804, please mute your phone. We can hear you.
Thank you, Diane.
Nope.
Okay. So, back to, uh, there were, obviously, and, and you've proven the point tonight, there's been a lot of focus on beaches, and everybody's trying to determine how to handle it. Um, they said that there's a lot of, the Joint Information Center said, there's a lot of information going around, still talking about face masks, yes or no, state unemployment, what's happening, stipends, and beaches. Okay.
Oh, oh.
Alright.
Yeah.
They're back. Friday. Oh my goodness, they're back. Okay.
Alright, I think I got rid of them.
Okay. Alright, so on Friday, well, this really would have been 10 minutes, honest to God.
I know. We won't count that.
Okay. Friday, um, they had a lot of PPEs delivered. There was a plane coming in, and they tested, um, 1,205 test, uh, people on Friday. That's a huge amount of testing. Um, they also said operations, they've got 39 members, again, first responders, again, it's different every day. This is the whole state. In case those people are still listening, we're not talking Newton. Uh, 39 members in alternative housing, 23 positive, and 34 in quarantine. Um, obviously, this weekend, the focus was on beaches, so they keep reminding us about that. They also talked about the local trends being, uh, the COVID numbers. Again, people are seeing numbers that are not necessarily accurate. They're saying, check your source. Um, and Matt has said that many times. They talked about, um, uh, plans of reopening and the task force. You all know you have access to all the guidelines that the tax, task force is working on, that the governor has approved. And they've got it in different se- sections. So you can see beaches, campground, um, beauty salons, uh, whatever. It's all there. Um, there's a lot of mixed opinions on the beaches. That was some of the social media stuff going on. Okay, next, we have, the next call was, this is rather interesting. Federal money is gonna be matched. Whatever eligible FEMA cost that we have as a town will be reimbursed at 75%, which we've been telling you right along. Larry has been saying that from the get-go. And then, when Federal CARES Act kicks in, they're gonna take care of the balance. So that's really good news for us. Uh, they're also working on reimbursement for alternative care sites, and they are looking to shut some down. You probably saw that on the news today. Uh, those are the temporary sites that they house COVID patients. The AG's office, um, commented and said they've established an email and a phone number that is dedicated to receive complaints about violations of the governor's orders from businesses or the public. And they said, questions about compliance and the enforcement of the government's Emergency Order 40 to do, use the following information. So, questions from law enforcement officers should be, should contact the Attorney General's Office at 931-9975. Questions from local officials as to how to interpret the governor's orders should be routed through the local liaison at the Emergency Operating Center. Um, if you, and then it says, if you receive complaints or inquiries from the public or businesses about compliance, or a local official would like to lodge a complaint, again, contact the AG's office. And this number is a little different. This is 603-3, uh, 271, sorry, 1225. Um, then we had Monday, let me see if there's anything I can scan to see that you really need. Uh, uh, topics, the governor's press conference, obviously, you heard him say opening up the beaches on June 1st. Uh, again, a lot of talk, mixed opinions about that. A lot of talk on, in Manchester about support for the homeless. Uh, we had ports and harbors that reported some small vessels over the weekend that capsized one in Hampton. Um, both cases were mariners, and they were picked up by boaters and brought to safety. Um, we had 23 first responders that day that tested positive. 34 members tracked in quarantine, increased to 50 members in alternative housing. And again, this is all first responders. This is ambulance drivers. This is, um, healthcare officials. This is police. This is fire, EMS. They also talked about, um, OHRV crashes. They're seeing more people out and about. They had a couple that were DWI. They're just seeing a lot of activity and asking people to be cautious, be careful. They also had search and rescue events. Uh, most of them, the, the victims were okay, and, and ones that weren't, the severity didn't necessitate any hospitalization. The legal call that we had on Tuesday, um, it's issuing updates to dispatch process protocol. When somebody called the emergency line, there's questions that they're gonna be asked, they, about respiratory issues. So they're gonna be changed from what our police and fire and ENS have been asking with the 911 dispatchers. Uh, there was a question about a federal campground in the town, and do they have to follow the guidelines as to what's going on? And they said, yes, we'll get back to you, but yes, they should follow the same guidelines. Um, there was a question about, has the state heard anything about the federal stipends? And the answer is, yes, it's coming, uh, but we'll get back to you with specifics. They also had cases in this particular town, and the Board of Selectmen were wondering where the positives were. Wanted to know where the benefits were. And it's from, the answer, you're not allowed to share with Board of Selectmen or general public any information. The information is used for responding to a call. And if you have any questions, you can call the liaison, and they can work through the process so that you understand what's going on. Today's call, um, yesterday, the governor, Executive 48 in regard to special education requirements and remote learning. They talked about employees and businesses and frequent close contacts with general public. They also wanted to reinforce that their testing has been expanding. The Department of Health said their supplies coming in today, and they are prepared for the shipment. The military is standing by, along with the National Guard. They had, um, you've heard us talk about mission tasks. We have 1,600 mission tasks on the books. Those come from all the emergency operating centers. So when something needs PPEs, whether it's police, fire, the transfer station, the road agent, uh, maybe the recreation department, whoever, um, they notify the EOC, and we put this mission into the books. And they're saying that it's working out very well, because people, now they're keeping track of what's happening in all the town. Uh, today, we have 23 positive first responders in the state of Massachusetts. 32 are currently in quarantine, and 46 are in alternative housing. They let us know that the coast bus, bus service on the seacoast is gonna resume full weekday service on Route 1 and Route 33, and also that the Manchester Transit Authority reports June 1st, they will commence with Phase 1 service reopening. They talked about a response to a number of concerns from our EMS and local dispatch centers. Again, the 911 is modifying the protocol interrogation, so that it is more refined and specific to symptoms related to COVID-19. Uh, that, we had, uh, oops, get back here. Um, they said testing, um, they talked about the reopening businesses, contact tracing. You've probably seen stuff on the news about Google and, um, Google and, who's the other one? The Apple, and how they're going to change, uh, or add an app, uh, which is really good. And then, wait a minute, we're only a little bit more, guys. I'm hurrying. Um, let's see. Uh, another town, this is today, asked a question, um, will Emergency Order 12, which is the notification proper access to town meetings, be upheld until there's a vaccine, or will virtual meetings go away? And the answer was, we haven't heard anything specific. We would assume that it would continue to be upheld as long as there's a state of emergency. Municipalities can declare an emergency under 91A and follow these provisions. And-
Is anything happening? I've seen they lost all kinds of connections.
Oh, hello?
Yeah, I think, uh, is that Jack?
Yep. Yeah? Okay, you can still hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so there's guidance on the Municipal Association website on this, and they said, under the state of emergency law, this can only be extended in 21-day increments, when they're talking about the virtual meetings. Another town said, we've moved from May to March town meeting, and we're unable to hold the meeting. But we did hold elections. They said, we do not have a budget to fall back on. We need a town meeting to approve the budget, and we've scheduled it for June 20th. How can we hold a legal meeting and approve a legal budget? And the Municipal Association said that they were working with the AG's office to clarify how to handle these meetings, and virtual meetings with drive-through voting. Boy, can you imagine? Where also, they said, we're also thinking of allowing towns to keep their previous year's budget. We've not heard back from the AG's office. Another town was talking about cabin owners that the AG's office allowed to open. I don't think that pertains to us. I'm gonna kind of skip over that. Um, another town wanted to know about, is music performance okay? And the answer is, they're limiting indoor performers to a solo person. A group that was performing would have to be six feet apart and six feet from customers, as long as everyone is outdoors. So, a group is only allowed outdoors, not indoors. Another town said, is the state ending the PPE distribution to, through the Department of Motor Vehicle Sites? That's where Larry has to go to pick up everything. And they're saying, businesses can purchase masks at the state liquor stores. The DMV sites will be closing down. In some cases, you might have to go to Concord. Um, and also said that you can continue to make purchases through the way you have, and then they'll be reimbursed through FEMA. Um, they wanted to know if they're gonna, um, if we have, uh, you know, a heat wave and people, uh, lose electricity because of it, it shuts down, how are we gonna handle a cooling, um, setup? And then, um, the AG's office said they're gonna follow up with, again, the cabin hotel. They said lodging guidance will be issued, but for now, hotels can only rent to vulnerable persons or essential workers. Um, and we've got the stay-at-home order 2.0. Another town said, under the restaurant guidance, it says no catering or large group functions. And they asked, is that correct? And the answer is, they believe, but they're gonna follow up. And then, another town said, can houses of worship reopen? And their answer was, it is a moving target at the moment. The CDC is issuing a guidance, and more information is coming soon. Um, and then, I've got, it, that's the end of my reports, but if I could just, unless somebody has a question, there's two other things that I have to bring up to do with the, um, EOC. Is that okay, or do I have any questions or complaints?
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Time's up.
Okay, Thomas, oh, you gotta love him, huh? Um, two of the things. One of them is, there was a lot of talk about the emergency assistance form. Understand that that is on our website. Some of you know it. Um, some of us that have been around for a long time called it the Alert Now. When Alert Now was, uh, bought out by Blackboard, we stopped calling it the Alert Now form, so it's the Emergency Assistance Form. I took a lot of calls today at the EOC. So did Larry. If anyone needs help with that, call us. We'll help you. It's very easy to fill out, and we put it at the very top of our page, so people can find it. Um, I explained it to a lot of people that called today. So, anyone that is referring them to us for questions, that's awesome. That's number one. Number two, um, we have a little bit of a safety issue at the EOC, and I'm wondering if the Board of Selectmen would consider, uh, Chad Beers came in to see us, and he said he has some trees that he needs to- said he has some trees that he needs to cut, but, and they're on his property, but in order to get to the trees, he's gotta come up a little bit on the town property. And if these don't get cut, they will come down and bring down our power line. So, he would just like permission to have his tree people come on the property and cut down these trees.
I just have a question. How did Chet Beers come in to see you?
Well, he actually, he came to the door, we had to go outside and talk to him.
Okay, good, I wanna make sure he's not entering the building.
No, no, he did go in.
All right, good. Uh, does anybody have any issue with Chet encroaching a little there to do that work?
Nope.
No. Kate, you good?
Sorry, I was muted, no issue.
Okay, so, I don't think we need a motion, just, um, I think, just let Chet know he can go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Um, and the last thing I have, which may or may not be appropriate for this venue, but I'll let you guys decide, I did meet, um, the Mark Lighthizer at the Town Hall to get an estimate on Mary Jo and Diane's window, and he called me today, we didn't get to the library, we're gonna do that next week, but his estimate is 6:45 total for both of them.
So, let's, let's table that, I think this is a more complicated meeting. Um, but it's, let's file that, that estimate, maybe the, uh, maybe the next COVID meeting, we talk about where we stand with the reopening.
Okay, well, just so that you know, Mary Jo was there, so she told him what she wanted. Um, Diane, and, you know, so he knows what, what it is and what she wants, and took the measurements. So, do what you have to do, and let me know, so I can let him know, he's getting buried with towns that are doing this.
Yeah.
Matt, question?
Go ahead, Larry.
Matt, I just wanna make sure that we meet the guidelines where we can get this money back.
Right.
If we wait, if we wait too long and they shut off the funding, then we're gonna end up paying for it. Right now, it's probably gonna be covered under the COVID.
Yeah, my, my issue is, uh, as I've said before, is I wanna see the full plan, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear us, hear about us doing one thing and then finding out down the line that that didn't meet the full needs of the opening of the Town Hall and where I have to undo something that we did. And I haven't, I haven't seen what that full plan is, so that's my issue. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
No, that's fine, we can wait for the whole plan, but I just wanted to get this covered under, under the, uh, under the grant, uh, that's all.
Yep. So, maybe, maybe on the next call, Monday, somebody can talk to us about what the plan is and how that fits into the plan, and we can get it approved.
I don't think they're, uh, meeting till next, after next Monday, the, uh, the team didn't meet this week, they're not meeting till after Monday of next week.
Right, we're meeting Tuesday.
Okay, so maybe Wednesday?
Okay.
Something like that? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
So, Trish, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, uh, COVID-related for this call? I have one announcement to make, uh, unrelated to COVID-19, but related to the last thing we did in town, um, before all of this. The Board of Selectmen accepted the bid from CAI Technologies for $34,400 to digitize the town tax maps as voted on March 10th, 2020, per warrant, Article 11.
Yay!
Okay, Trish is happy, so that's good.
I am.
We made one person happy tonight, I think that's a, that's a win for us. Um, anything else for this meeting that I'm missing?
Matt.
Charlie.
Should we discuss the, uh, the engineering?
So, the engineering, good, good reminder there. So, so, uh, just so the public knows, we're in the midst of trying to sell the old fire station, we want to engineer it so we do not lose in the sale, the peanut trail entrance as well as the, uh, fire pond. Uh, we do need an engineer to do so, we have one bid, which I won't mention the bidder's name, or not a bid, but a quote, I won't mention their name, but it's, uh, not to exceed $7,500, is that correct, Charlie?
That's correct.
So, the question to the board, and I know Lisa mentioned to me, she's wondering if, since it's that much money, if we wanna get other quotes, competitive quotes, what does the rest of the board think we should do? What do you wanna do?
I thought we have to by rule, get one more, don't we?
It's our rule, though, so.
And what's the purpose of all?
Larry?
Kate, you all done?
Yes.
Kate done?
Kate done.
Matt, I just don't, I don't wanna lose the sale, I mean, it, it's minimal, I'd rather just go forward with it and get it done, we don't know how long it's gonna take, get all the paperwork back, if we lose the sale, we're, we're back on the, on a market again.
Yeah, and I, I think the times that we've, we've, uh, kind of, uh, waived our rule for bids has been in these situations, when expediency is necessary, so, um, Charlie, do you wanna make a motion, maybe?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, give the $1,500 deposit to SEC, that's the correct company, right?
Think so.
Yep. ASAP, for the, for the, uh, engineering of, uh, 35 South Main Street.
Second, and you have all the correct info, right, the vendor name?
Yeah, Diane, Diane should.
Yeah.
Because we had, we had the, uh, the bid sent over to us, I mean, the proposals, I'm sorry.
So, everybody knows Charlie's saying we need to, uh, put a deposit down, and then, it's one of those things where he's estimating no more than 75 to do the work, so, uh, we pay as we go. Um, so, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Larry.
Matt?
Go, Diane.
You need to have an authorized signature on that.
Okay, so, Charlie, wanna, uh, update your motion to have me sign?
I also included my motion that, uh, Matt Varell sign the, uh, paperwork as needed.
Awesome. Thank you, Nancy, you have a?
Yeah, I was just curious, is that motion, um, explaining what the purpose is, we need to have that in the efficacy, so she knows what the 1,500 is for?
Wanna update that?
I said it was the deposit of the engineering at 35 South Main Street.
Of what, though, is my question? We just need to add that in there.
Oh, okay, to, uh, exclude the fire pond from 35 South Main Street.
Okay.
So it's a lot line adjustment?
There you go.
Yes.
So very, all right, so, that's a cleaned up motion, Diane, right? That's good to go?
Yeah, I'll clean it up.
All right, thanks. She does that well.
That's a Charlie motion.
Who seconded it?
Uh, Larry.
Thank you.
So, let's, let's go around, Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kate's an aye, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous. Um, okay, anything else for tonight?
Do you have some minutes?
What are the minutes?
Matt?
All right, let's back up, Charlie, go.
How much information do you want me to give to Carla?
Well, I think, uh, we can tell Carla that we've contracted with somebody to do the work, right? She can share that. I think we've told the proposed buyer already that that's what we're doing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I told her, but I still had told her the other day when I talked to her that we had to, we had to vote on it, and we had to, you know, send the check out.
Yeah, I agree. And I think, uh, I think, uh, we're pretty transparent with what we're doing here. If we, if we discover oil, then we need to keep that hush-hush, so.
Don't be bad!
We'll kill the sale.
Yeah, exactly. Um, okay, so, what are the date of the minutes, Diane?
Hang on, my phone's ringing.
Public minutes, May 18th and 20th. And non-public, um, May 19th, uh, public and non-public, 19th.
Hold on, I gotta meet somebody. Uh, somebody wanna make a motion for that?
See, Matt, you said May 18th and 19th?
May 18th and 20th, public minutes.
So I make the motion to accept the public meetings dated May 18th and May 20th as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I got it, I got it in the world call.
All four.
And then.
Getting punchy, it's been an hour and 20.
Public and non-public for May 19th.
Yep. And that was it, right?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as written for public and non-public dated May 19th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
All right, Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. All right, anything else? How about a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Seconded by Kate, we're all in favor. Uh, so we'll see everybody Monday night. Thank you for, uh, your time, and people of the public for your input. Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.